I'm going to for. Oh, there we go. I started before the recording, so I'll say that one more time. Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission Working Session. This is a not a meeting that we the Planning Commissioners will take action on or vote on. That is our normal practice in working sessions. And I also want to just acknowledge that Commissioner Lee is not on tonight. He has recused himself from participating in any of the discussions of this matter. So in terms of the agenda, Mr. Leonard, can I hand it over to you?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Commissioner, and good evening. Everybody else. I hope you're well this evening. As Commissioner Mills started, we are going to be providing a brief presentation about fifteen to twenty minutes-ish where we are going to City Planner Alexis Delio is going to provide an overview of a proposal rezoning of the city's newly adopted TC1 zoning district. This is in the area focused on South State and Eisenhower Parkway. We are going to take the opportunity of this participation meeting. This is also functioning as a citizen participation meeting, so it's of course, to share this proposed city-initiated rezoning with both property owners and nearby residents in advance of any petition formally appearing consideration on an agenda. But we're also going to take the opportunity to briefly introduce a potential tax amendment to the TC1 district as well, which you will see incorporated into that presentation as well. At the conclusion of the presentation, we're going to open it up to question, answer, feedback. I would ask everybody to feel comfortable to do either. Use the Q and A function to the greatest extent possible, as that will help us cover as much of your questions and feedback as possible. If it's just a comment on the proposed rezoning, please feel free to put it in there as well, because we will be a recording report of all of the information included in that as well. Whether you have a question or just want to provide some feedback, that's a great mechanism for us to record that as well. We're going to go through the presentation to the Commissioners. We're really going to focus on public comment and feedback through that mechanism at the conclusion of the presentation. So as Commissioner Mills introduced, this is an opportunity for you to share in the feedback that you hear, as well as this proceeds through city consideration. But we will, of course, provide an opportunity towards the end to address any questions or additional information that would be helpful to you. Lastly, we are shooting to keep this to about a two-hour meeting. If for some reason there are questions that we are unable to address prior to that time, we do anticipate that we'll follow up with written responses to those and share those through the project website, which you can see referenced on this page here. So with that, I'm going to introduce City Planner Alexis Delio, who will walk us through the presentation.
Thank you. Okay, here we go. Thank you, Mr. Leonard. You covered some of what I was going to say in my introduction and welcome, but welcome to the special webinar meeting of the Planning Commission. I am Alexis Delio, a city planner. This webinar will also serve as our resident participation meeting for the proposed rezoning of sixty-nine parcels in the state and Eisenhower area. I'll be even more brief than I planned. I'm going to go over the proposed rezoning and the TC1 district, as Brett mentioned. I'll touch on a separately proposed amendment that would affect parcels that are zoned TC1. Rezoning process in general, some of the impacts and nonconformities, what are they, how to deal with them, and development and redevelopment, and then opening it up for questions. So here are the sixty-nine parcels proposed to be rezoned. These parcels were identified and selected by staff working with the Planning Commission's Ordinance Revisions Committee, and they're aligned with the intent and purpose of the TC1 district. They are literally called out in the ordinance as appropriate for TC1 zoning designation. The proposed rezoning area runs or includes lots that front on South State Street between Oak Brook on the north and I-94 on the south. And it has lots that front on Eisenhower, just west of South Main on the west, over to the railroad tracks on the east, and it includes lots that front on Boardwalk, between Oak Brook all the way down to Victor's Way and including Victor's Way. Before I move on to the next slide, let me talk about what is sometimes a little bit of an elephant in the room. You will see that Briarwood Mall is not proposed for rezoning. Briarwood Mall will receive its own special planning effort, which may or may not include a new zoning designation. It's hard to say, because we haven't tackled that yet. But whatever its future entails, it'll be a separate and a specific process, and we will deal with Briarwood Mall as its own node. Ideally, it will play nicely together with TC1, but it will be, it will have its own thing. Now, we're going to do a little bit of a poll, so that this might help me not drone on about some things, or maybe add a little bit more. So I think that Brett is going to pop up a poll about telling us a little bit about yourselves. Here we go. Just pick one of the best responses that describes who you are, and then a poll will be done.
Just give it a few seconds here. Ten more seconds, maybe.
All right, so I'm seeing that about equal amounts of property owners in the rezoning area as folks who live or work near the rezoning area. And but about half of you work elsewhere, but you're still interested. Great. All right, like I said, it's a one-question poll and fast. All right, so the Transit Corridor District, code name TC1, was created this past summer. It is intended to be along existing transit corridors that are already served and have stops by the ride buses. Our transit system is buses. It is supposed to encourage support redevelopment and infill. We'd like to see mixed-use developments and achieve a mixed-use corridor that both supports and sustains that existing transit service, as well as enables more housing choices, hopefully some of which will be more affordable. It will be more sustainable forms of development with reduced resource and energy needs. And it is a pedestrian-friendly district, and pedestrian-friendly designs here are critically important. The TC1 district allows multiple family residential uses, all types of office, most of the general commercial, retail, and personal services, and some R and D. These uses are mostly the same as the permitted uses in the D2 Downtown Interface District and the O Office District. You'll see that the D, I'm sorry, the TC1 district is actually sort of a mashup of the D2 and the O district in many aspects, in terms of permitted uses, general zoning standards, and some of the special standards and so forth. We took, we like to think that we took the best parts of each one of those districts and then created the TC1 district. These are the general dimensional standards for the TC1 district. It is in the mixed-use section of the ordinance, right? Embedded in the mixed-use zoning district table, the TC1 here on the screen is the yellowish-tanish line. For floor area, you'll note it says C-section five sixteen three Q to be specific, and that sends you to the use-specific standards pages. Otherwise, the other dimensional standards are here in the table. You'll notice that there's no FAR maximum, but there are minimum and maximum front setbacks and a range of height limits depending on the distance from residential zoning. The TC1 district operates more like a form-based code. Form-based codes really try to regulate the overall box that development must fit into, and it has additional layout and divine feature requirements. More in a second. But really, the hallmark of a form-based code is based on the situation, tailored dimensional standards based on the situation, and not having across-the-board percentages that apply uniformly. These specific standards in the TC1 district, here they are. These are what sets the TC1 district apart. The standards are divided into two types of buildings, either townhouse apartments or mixed-use buildings, and for two lot sizes, those less than two hundred fifty feet wide and those more than two hundred fifty feet wide. Now, when I say townhouse or apartments or mixed-use buildings, a townhouse or apartment building is, that's it, that's solely residential building. If it has any other uses, it's a mixed-use building. So mixed-use buildings can have apartments in them, but and townhouse apartment and apartments cannot. Then there are six categories of standards, categories of design standards. There are standards for the buildings themselves, and then the building frontage across the lot for the site, for access and circulation, for off-street parking in terms of numbers of parking spaces, and then for the parking lot itself in terms of size and placement. I know you can't read the table on the left, but I did include it to show how the code would look in real life if you were to read the order. And because the table was so small, I've got this slide prepared with some of the specific standard highlights. For buildings, example, the first floor must be a minimum of fifteen feet tall. The first floor also has to have a minimum of sixty percent transparency. Transparency is how much doors and windows versus solid brick or whatever material wall. Buildings must have functional entrances and street-facing doors are required. These are things you probably see, but really they're not required. In the TC1, they are required. For building frontage, the building must span a minimum of seventy-five percent of the lot width. There are some nuances in the ordinance language that talks about exempting, say, a completing land use buffer width and so forth, but here is the here you'll see what kinds of standards we're talking about and the gist of the form-based code. For a site, the sites must be designed as blocks, two hundred and fifty feet square. If you have a larger site, you'll have to treat it and break it down into smaller components. Also on the site, only non-residential uses on the first floor of buildings at the street corners. Sites can only have a maximum of one or two driveways per lot, depending on their size. For off-street parking in the TC1 district, there is no minimum off-street parking requirement. There is a maximum requirement, so parking is not prohibited. You can provide parking. And the maximum is what the current minimum requirement is now. So for example, say you're proposing an apartment building in the TC1 district. Elsewhere in the city, in another zoning district, it's going to require one parking space per apartment. You've got a hundred apartment building, that's a hundred parking spaces. So elsewhere in the city, that's going to be your minimum requirement, minimum a hundred parking spaces for that apartment building. In the TC1 district, the maximum number of spaces that you're allowed is one hundred spaces, and there is no minimum there. When providing parking, you still need to meet the EV percentage requirements, and no matter what, even if there's no parking, you must provide the required bicycle parking. For the parking lot, the parking lot footprint cannot exceed the building footprint. This is a district that is supposed to be pedestrian-oriented. It is focused on the people and the buildings. We don't want to be using our precious land for parking lots. We want to be using them for buildings or people. I mentioned there was an ordinance amendment in the works that will affect property zone TC1. This amendment will shorten the distance from nearby residential zoning districts for the tallest height allowance. This table shows the current and proposed height limits, and it shows where now one hundred feet of buffer is required for any buildings up to three hundred feet tall. The buffer distance is proposed to be shortened to six hundred feet. There's no change proposed to the first three buffers, and there's no change to any of the actual height limits. The proposed change is just to move from six hundred feet to, I'm sorry, move from one thousand feet to six hundred feet away from a residential zoning district. Here's what it looks like cross-section, like in the field. Buildings can be either, building height maximums are fifty-five feet, seventy-five feet, one hundred and twenty feet, or three hundred feet, depending on distance. Shortest closest between thirty and eighty feet from residential district, that's our shortest building height. There are two middle chunks, eighty to three hundred feet is a seventy-five-foot building. After three hundred feet, the buildings can be a hundred and twenty feet, and after six hundred feet proposed, the buildings could be six hundred, three hundred feet tall. Here is something showing the where the proposed rezoning district and what would be opened up to the three-hundred-foot maximum height buildings with the amendment. The white parts on this map are all more than a thousand feet away from the residential zoning districts. No change there. The yellow indicates where the land is between six hundred and a thousand feet away, and so this is the area that would now be allowed to have a three-hundred-foot tall building if desired. The red is the six-hundred-foot buffer, and so no change for this area. It always could, and it will continue to be limited to a hundred and twenty-foot tall buildings in this area. This is the whole state and hours and how our proposed rezoning area, those parcels are outlined in black. Here's a little bit of a zoomed-in detail area over top of Air Photo, so you can see the buildings and parking lots. Easier to to see what is going on and to see the change that might be affected here. Nothing changes for the unshaded area, just like in the larger detail. The yellow areas where the change happens and the red pink shading, that's where no change would occur with the proposed rezoning amendment. If you're interested in examining any one of those parcels in more detail, or any lot in the city, actually, we have an interactive mapping tool, so I'll pitch and promo that right for a second. You'll find the tool at a2gov.org/tc1rezoning. And with the tool, you can type in an address or just zoom in, and then click on the buffer distance you want. You can choose from thirty feet, eighty feet, three hundred, six hundred, and a thousand, and see where in on in real life that would fall. So here is the possible probable likely timeline for this rezoning petition. I will write up a petition, which is essentially just a list of the parcels. It's a form letter that says, Dear Planning Commission, please zone this list from X to TC1. We love paperwork. If the petition is submitted, and we do intend to submit it around December 1st, that will track to the January twentieth, twenty twenty-two, yikes, January twentieth, twenty twenty-two Planning Commission meeting for a public hearing. In between, city staff will review that petition as any other petition. We have a team from across a variety of departments who looks at all petitions, and we look for our own area of expertise. For example, the Planning Department, we look at consistency with the master plan, consistency with the zoning ordinance, good planning practice, and so forth. Example, the Engineering Department looks at rezoning petitions for public utility capacity, and if additional amounts of development are allowed, can our utility system handle it? Then we'll write up a staff report, make a recommendation for the January twentieth, twenty twenty-two Planning Commission meeting. That staff report will be published on the Thursday before, on January fourteenth. The Planning Commission will have a public hearing. They are a recommending body, and so that night, ideally, they will make their recommendation and move it on to City Council. City Council's rules for ordinance amendments, including map changes, rezonings, are a little bit old-fashioned. First, they have a first reading. That could be on February twenty-second. The mayor will read aloud the petition, enter it into the record. That night, the council will not vote on the rezoning petition itself, but they will vote on whether to move it along to the next meeting to, for a second reading. So when they pass it along, it could then be scheduled for March twenty-first, and the City Council will then have the public hearing and will vote on the actual rezoning itself. So you'll see here there are a minimum of two more public hearings coming up once the rezoning petition is submitted. Then, what does the rezoning mean? Well, the zoning map will be updated. This here is a fake zoning map, but this is the change, what it would look like if the petition is approved exactly as submitted and proposed. The TC1 district is in the rust-red color. Most commercial districts are some shade of red. And then what are the impacts? What are anything that would impact the sixty-nine parcels? Well, a rezoning changes the rules of development for the affected properties. These properties will be subject to the standards and requirements of the TC1 district and may or may not comply or conform. So nonconformities may be created. A nonconformity, people sometimes call it grandfathering, but what it is, is a lawfully created lot or structure or use that no longer conforms to the regulations of its zoning district and the UDC. I've done some preliminary analysis. We will not be creating any nonconforming lots because of the proposed rezoning, because the TC1 district has no minimum lot size, so all sixty-nine lots meet that threshold. We also will not be creating any nonconforming structures on the day of approval. The TC1 standards apply to new buildings. Existing buildings, their standard of of compliance would be to the previous zoning designation. We will be creating at least one nonconforming use. The TC1 district does not allow auto-oriented uses, specifically gas stations. There is one gas station in the area, so we would be creating one nonconforming use. The code already prescribes what to do and how to treat nonconforming uses. They may remain, kept in good condition, good repair, continued on indefinitely, but they cannot be reestablished. And finally, we will be creating some nonconforming development standards, and those will initially be, it is what it is, but they must be addressed upon redevelopment. Now, redeveloping or developing new or redeveloping. The TC1 district is intended to spark infill and redevelopment in the area. If the rezoning is approved, we hope you property owners would consider additional development on your land. New development usually means submitting a site plan then. Remodeling, remodeling jobs do not require a site plan, but any additions to existing buildings and new buildings do require site plan approval. There are three types of site plans, depending on the scope of work. It is the same application, submitting the same materials, but there are three different procedures and approvals depending on what you're doing. For small additions to previously approved site plans, the planning manager approves that. I have also checked, and all sixty-nine parcels have some form of site plan on file, whether it's very old or recent, but there is something on file, so therefore all of them can take advantage of the site plan for planning manager approval if they're doing a small addition. If the work is just for site changes, such as expanding a parking lot, something along those lines, the Planning Commission is authorized to approve those site plans. And then for any site plans for new buildings or large additions, that requires a site plan for City Council approval, and that gets reviewed by staff. It is heard by Planning Commission and given a recommendation, but it is approved by City Council. How to deal with those nonconformities? Site plans to be approved must show existing conditions and proposed improvements that meet the current standards. This is already the case for several situations. Sites that have outdated stormwater management systems must upgrade the stormwater management system to meet current code. Same thing with landscaping, particularly screening and bufferings or parking lot landscaping with lighting. But when developing in the TC1 district, some of the upgrades that need to be included might be closing a curb cut or adding some driveways, sidewalks to create those blocks that are required. Maybe removing or redesigning a parking lot if the new building is not on top of the parking lot already. Oh, here we go. So clearly, I've talked enough. I hope I've given you a good description of what is being proposed, give you a good flavor of what's going on. I'd like to turn it over all to you now for any questions or comments. Again, please use the Q and A function at the bottom of your screen. We will try to take most questions live right here. We've got, I've got myself and planning manager Brett Leonard here. Some questions we might be able to answer right in the chat, especially if they're yes or no. If we don't get to a question, we'll provide a response on the webpage. And then note here my contact information if that the conclusion, we didn't get to your question, or if you have thought of a new or follow-up question, please feel free to email me at adeleio@a2gov.org or the Planning Department, planning@a2gov.org. This presentation slides are already up on the website, which is a2gov.org/tc1zoning. That's where you'll find the interactive mapping tool as well. And then any additional information will be posted there also.
All right. Thank you, Alexis. Let's jump into it. We've got a couple of questions here. The first is, should the State Street Park and Ride be relocated as part of this plan? Currently, anyone commuting via ninety-four to that park and ride would be driving through the entire TC1 area to get there, which seems contrary to the idea of bus-oriented development.
I feel it's a great question. I think in terms of what we can, what we can do is that when looking at the TC1 district, we can ensure that a park and ride is a permitted use, and we can make sure to make space for, we can make sure that it's made space for, but I can say that as a planner, I can't actually arrange for it to move. But I feel like that's a great question, and I think it would be, I think it's right on target.
What is the rationale for allowing taller buildings on lots that are farther from residential? Is there an assumption that people in residential areas don't want to look at taller buildings, or that they would throw undesirable shade or create undesirable air currents or other? Maybe I'll start with part of it's frankly convention. We have a lot of structure in our ordinance that I think does make assumptions that taller building closer to residential districts are seen as less desirable or can be more impactful. So part of, so I think part of it is just following a convention that oftentimes we have standards that diminish in height or intensity as they get closer to residential districts. Is there anything you wanted to add to that, Alexis?
No, I think actually the questionnaire has almost answered in their question.
So in short, though, it's not, you know, no, it's not based on shade analysis. It's not based on air currents. It is moving, I guess, mass further away from residential districts. Why are you rushing to get this rezoned? Do you have projects in the pipeline to further develop the area? What's the timeframe for such development? All these buildings will make traffic busier. Someone will occupy the taller buildings. I can start with this. The, the as part of the creation of this district, the Planning Commission also communicated to the City Council its intention to start considering rezoning of this, not be, not in response to any potential Not be, not in response to any potential development, but I think in a way in fear of potential development. This is an opportunity to take zoning districts and encourage uses that will in fact be better for automotive transportation congestion by limiting parking, by providing more opportunity for development for people to do just that and live in buildings close to these transit routes. So it's, I don't think it's a, it's not a rush because there's a development proposal. I think it's a desire to put the standards in place to start getting the proto, the typology of development that will be more sustainable and supportive to transit corridors in the future. I don't know if any Alexis you want to add or any commissioners want to jump in that I totally missed the boat on that.
I would only add that in terms of timeframe for development, you know, the, the city of Ann Arbor does not have a timeframe for development. I think based on my experience, so there's sixty nine parcels in this area. I think that maybe one parcel, just based on experience and the sheer numbers, I think one might be quick to propose and get put forth a site plan and maybe build an additional project. But it takes years for, to, to realize and to see new development. And some of the sixty nine may never redevelop or put infill projects on. So I think that the timeline is long. And although we might see a property or two move quickly, but you know, it takes about a year to get a site plan approved. Construction of large buildings or even medium buildings takes one to two years. So we're, the timeframe is years. And then given the number and the size of the district, the pace will be slow.
What is the plan for increasing bus frequency or service hours? I'll, I'll jump in on this one as well. You know, we've, we've had a lot of conversations with the ride on this proposed zoning district, its application. I, I, and by no means would I speak for them. If, if you're not aware, they are going through their own long range planning process right now. And I would highly recommend that you make sure you're providing your feedback to them as well. But part of the, this proposed rezoning is just that to increase bus frequency and service hours because our transit system is responsive to need largely. And it is, our system, it doesn't make economic sense necessarily to just automatically up the frequency and service hours of every transit corridor in the city when there isn't the corresponding ridership and use. What this is attempting to do is to change our land use patterns to start supporting that relationship so that the land use decisions that are happening start to increase demand by both adding use and by restricting vehicular aspects of those developments in order to try and frankly drive the demand and the corresponding economic viability of those services, those corridor services to be more frequent and expand their service hours over time. But ultimately, you know, what triggers happen in that regard would be a better question for the ride. But from a, a planning perspective, part of the goal here is to make, consider the decisions that can happen from a land use framework to help drive some of that success. Alexis, are there any incentives for developers to provide affordable housing or sustainability in this proposed zoning district?
There are no outward overt incentives for affordable housing. However, we have made it as easy as possible to develop. We have tried to remove every barrier that is reasonable with no floor area ratio standard or maximum. There is no penalty for any existing development. So developers can add more. We love to see rows of apartments alongside or in front of the existing office buildings out there. And they can keep their existing buildings and, and add these new, these new uses. I think that is a subtle incentive. And as well, we've removed the barrier for providing more parking, the big cost to development. And we've tried to make our standards so that we are comfortable with the form that the development will take. And, but we are as generous as possible with encouraging new development. For sustainability, again, these play in as well. My friends in the sustainability office love to tell me that there is no more sustainable building or green building than the one that's already there. So these standards and the TC one district does as much as we can to help with adaptive reuse and to, and to build upon what we already have. And so there is some sustainability baked right into the district. But zoning doesn't do tax incentives and zoning can't really get at the building code in terms of, you know, you can't regulate behavior with, with zoning and you can't regulate how much insulation is provided in a building. That's building code and those sort of things. But we can regulate where the density goes and what it's next to transit service. And we can make it as easy as possible to develop where the development fits best in the city, all of which contributes towards affordability, choice and sustainability.
What is the impact of the airport being so close? Would that limit the height of buildings in the TC one area?
It could. There are federal regulations about tall buildings in a, in a zone around the airport. I, I think that the flight path here that the FAA regulates does not go over state streets. It, it would impact things south of ninety four, but that would be, that would be if we get development and exactly where it's proposed, that is part of the normal site plan review process and the thing that the airport staff look at, they're on the team. So it, it's a, it might be a small factor, but it would, it's very site specific.
Question, is there specific transit related allowances in the zoning? For example, bus stops being offset from the road to reduce obstruction to traffic flow, protected bike lanes, bike lanes visually distinguished from pedestrian lanes. I would start from that, that a lot of those decisions are actually public right of way decisions and not so much private regulation decisions, the form that happens on private property. Again, the, the transit offsets, I know that those at times have negative consequences as well as, sometimes that can be a barrier for that same bus to get back into the travel lane. So I, I think those can be sort of on a case by case application where desired by, by the ride. But the short of it is, is that from a zoning perspective, while some of these decisions I think are more decisions that the city has to make long term about its right of way or other roadway jurisdictions, we are trying to make sure that the land use is doing no harm to that approach. For example, we're limiting the number of parking spaces that can be provided in some circumstance, in, in all the circumstances. We're emphasizing pedestrian and non motorized transportation. We're limiting cuts all towards the, the goal of making decisions on the private property that aren't, are going to not only support, but certainly do no harm to the long term goals of the public right of way decisions, whether it's bus, non motorized or other modes. Twenty nine hundred South State Street has a shared parking lot with several restaurants, World Market, Contempo Salon, Here USA. Will this parking lot be adjusted in any way? I'll start with Alexis, we'll, we'll, we'll put it up again, or actually it's on the screen now. Anybody who wants to talk about their specific site, feel free to reach out. We'd be happy to, to walk through, but the short of it is that no, no part, no change is going to happen if no development happens. But if that property seeks to expand, then we're going to look at those parking maximums to see if they are meeting the current, the standards of that proposed district. So nothing's going to happen if the property still sort of operates in a status quo manner. However, if, if it is desirous to increase the development there, then there could be changes to that parking required, such as looking at the maximum number, looking at the ratio of that parking to the uses and the number of curb caps, for example, and how those function. Anything else you want to add to that, Alexis?
Yeah, perfect.
All right. Did Alexis say that there are taller buildings right now? Or simply that as of now, the zoning would allow the taller buildings?
So I can't remember what I exactly said, but let me start fresh. Right now, the office district has a fifty five foot height limit when it's within, I think, three hundred feet of residential zoning. And after that, it's unlimited height. So, and, and some of the, many of these properties are now zoned office. You'll also find some commercial zoning in the area, and that also has a variable height. Let's call it fifty five feet ish. Then if it's proposed, if it's rezoned to TC one, then we have four levels of height limits. And the levels are fifty five feet, seventy five feet, one twenty and three hundred. And the height goes up on the sliding scale. Tall, if you want the taller building, it has to, you have to have the, be blessed with being farther away with the residential district. There is no change proposed to those height limits, but the change is allowing those to get closer to the residential. So today, if it's rezoned to TC one and you want the tallest possible building, three hundred feet, you're going to have to make sure that your site is one thousand feet away. The change would be if you want the tallest possible building, it only has to be six hundred feet away. Did that? Do you think that answered the question?
Yeah, I think part of it is too, is just clarifying that, you know, we do have some districts now in this area that have unlimited height. But they also come, you know, with the FAR limits. If that doesn't address the question from the inquiry, please don't hesitate to ask again. And we do our best to clarify. I just want to share, there, there's some written comments and responses I've done regarding the setback of properties as it gets close to transportation corridors, specifically I ninety four. That is, high volume vehicular corridors are often associated with poor air quality. And the short of it is the zoning ordinance itself doesn't do anything to intervene between the, the building code requirements for air quality and at this location or any other one. The question was, you know, should that be looked at? You know, as we're encouraging more residential in this area, that should be something to be considered. That really wouldn't be a consideration of the application of the TC one zoning other than choosing not to put it in a location. But the short of it is, absolutely could be looked at as part of any modifications to the TC one district to consider a different setbacks when you're talking about freeways or, or other corridors. Are all properties grandfathered? And, and if not, what will the repercussions be, Alexis?
Yeah. The, the official term for grandfathering is nonconforming. Nonconforming means it was legal, it, it met all the rules that was supposed to meet, proper permits, proper approvals, and then though the rules changed. Now, there are different kinds, there's different aspects of nonconforming and or grandfathering. You can have a, there, in the code, it addresses three types of nonconformities and says what you should do about them. One is nonconforming lot. We are not creating any nonconforming lots here. Nonconforming lot means it's too small. None of these lots will be too small for the TC one district. Another kind of nonconformity is a structure. The structure is either too tall or not set back enough or set back too much, something like that. But the way that the TC one district is crafted, it says that, that, the new, the standards apply to new development. So everything out there meets the standard because the standard is basically, did you meet the old code? So we're, we're pretty okay in that regard for, for any properties out there. There is the question, and we also address nonconforming uses. We are creating at least one nonconforming use. The gas station can remain there indefinitely as long as it's maintained in good repair and open for business. If the property owners decide to redevelop it from, to something else, the something else will need to be a permitted use and they won't be able to go back to a gas station. And then there's development standards. I think a lot of the properties, because we are evolving the code, a lot of the properties are not going to comply with our max, new maximum parking requirements, with our new maximum parking size and so forth. Those would be grandfathered until redevelopment is proposed. And then along with whatever stuff the property owner may desire, they'll have to include the upgrades and amendments and improvements to meet the current code. So properties are going, they're going to be, can have some sort of nonconforming status, which gives them some rights. The code tells us exactly how to treat them. And how to address them is, is depending on what kind of nonconformity is and what, what you want, the future of the property would be if you're proposing a development or not.
And another great application to reach out to Alexis for sort of a one on one conversation about your property, what's there now, what your long term plans may be. That's a great dialogue to have. A couple of questions here that are related. What is the long term vision for this area of the city? Is there a similar type of zoning in another city that might serve as a model? And then this is likely the most significant rezoning in Ann Arbor's history. Why is this being done without a comprehensive review of the master plan that involves citywide resident input? And how was this decision made? So the city has a comprehensive plan specifically for the South State Corridor area. It is available on the city's website. It specifically recommends looking at land use districts being established that would encourage more mixed use and more transit oriented development. So, and then I think that's one of the reasons that this area is really primed to be considered early for the adoption of this, this proposed ordinance. The city did look at other, other types of ordinances as models, but also recognize that we also have to function within the current framework of our other development standards. So, but the short of it is, we did look at other models and, and crafting this. But also, we also looked at some of our existing districts, some of the aspects as Alexis indicated with our, some of our other zoning districts and how pieces of those that are very familiar and utilized already in our community could be put together in a district in this, in this place. As far as being done without a comprehensive review of the master plan, this, this work is, is called for in the master plan. We have a variety of land use plans that put together, that form our comprehensive plan and numerous of them call for this prototype of development. Talks about reducing reliance on automobiles, about access to transit and about corridors as an opportunity for mixed use development. So I would say that part of this approach is in fact trying to implement the goals that have been identified in community master plans for some time. My objections to the rezoning fears that the traffic coming out of a new project onto Main Street would create hazardous conditions and traffic jams. What steps would be taken to avoid this possible problem? Alexis, how does, just, it might be an opportunity just for sort of a primer and how traffic is reviewed as part of a development?
Sure. First, we have no properties with a South Main address included in this proposed rezoning. Now, South Main is on the edge of the corridor, and I think that you could interchange State or Eisenhower for this question. But it is part of, it has always been, it is part of our standard development review process that when a project is proposed, our traffic engineers look at both the site plan layout and they also review the traffic impact study. We have a pretty low threshold for when a traffic impact study is required. And our traffic engineers are trying to evolve and not just look at what the, what the traffic impacts of a whole development, whatever is existing plus whatever is proposed. They look at a level of service LOS, that's a traffic engineering thing. And they rate each intersection for a level of service. Basically, how long do the cars have to wait to? And they rate each intersection for a level of service, basically, how long do the cars have to wait to? To use that intersection. But they're also moving towards um. How many, uh, what the what projects and what the developments uh vehicle miles traveled would generate? And so. Um, they're going to look at each site plan that's being proposed. And for how would it impact level of service on in on intersections, but also how will it impact vehicle miles traveled? We are trying as a community, as a country and a planet. To reduce the vehicle miles traveled. That's what contributes um to climate change. That what is what um affects sustainability, that what affects livability. So the steps taken to avoid these are our traffic engineers are on the job, looking at. What the impacts are for each and every develop new development that that is proposed, whether it be in the TC one district or whether it be outside of the TC one district. And the advantage of the TC one district is there are so many more um. Design requirements that speak to. Um. Pedestrian access, being on a transit line, we're gonna meet those um traffic concerns easier here than anywhere else.
Thank you, Alexis. Um, I want to go uh go back, um, one of the other questions about um comprehensive planning and this rezoning. Uh, I wanted to be clear, also as part of that. You know. No decision has been made yet. This is the first step in a proposed rezoning, a proposed application of the zoning district. So um, that was part of the previous question that I didn't address, and I just wanted to be clear. No decision is made, that is part of this um opportunity here to hear questions, hear feedback. All of this will be uh considered in the context of both the Planning Commission determining whether and how to move forward. Um, and ultimately, the City Council in making a decision in response to such a proposal. If parking will be decreased, will parking structures be added? Generally, parking structures are permitted, however, part of the goal here is more development with less parking. Um, so it won't automatically result in parking structures being added. Um. Thank you, somebody sent me information about airport height limitations, I will look at that, um, and we'll, we can update that. Uh. Are the new con, is new construction going to be done after existing buildings are demolished? Or are you counting on the mall's parking lot for taller buildings? Um, in short, it could be. We're not counting on them all, but part of this is the the balance that I think Alexis uh. Summarizes is that we're specifically applying applying these standards to new development on existing parcels, so it could be either way. It could be adding development to an existing property. Or it could be starting over a new on a parcel code, so it could happen in either way. Um, strongly in favor of the zoning, a comment about um how this area is, um, since it's mostly closed at night. And um it's setback far from the road, it doesn't feel safe, it doesn't feel welcoming. Um, having more apartments in that area would be very desirable. Um. I currently own a building on Eisenhower Parking, so I'd be able to develop new residential housing on the current lot because of the new zoning requirements. Potentially, you might be, it might be permissible for housing now. Um. Uh, it would depend on your specific zoning district. Again, that'd be a great opportunity to check in with Alexis and go over your specific site. Um, with what's um, what what's possible, what would be challenges. Um, regarding bus frequency, I was considering moving to an area like this with no parking. I would not want to do so unless it really solid bus routes and schedules were already in place. I wouldn't just move there and hope for the best. It's shoe buses are flexible and often cities end up taking advantage of that to cut back when the budget gets tight. Um, great, great point. Um, and I I would say that in this case, the city does have a dedicated millage for um the public transit system, so it's not sort of in. Um, the same um. Line items as maybe some other um cities might have in in making budget decisions, but. Um, transit agencies fa- face the same budget decisions that all municipalities do. Um, so um, I think it's a fair, it's a fair point, but I I also think it's a bit of a chicken and egg. We also, it's also difficult from the transit provider's perspective to make significant investments in a higher level of service or infrastructure. Um, with the hope that those users are going to materialize. So it's definitely a balance, and part of this is trying to help hopefully provide some support um from the land use perspective. Uh, what?
I would add to that, and it leads in a little bit to the next question, but I would add that um. These properties, this, these transit corridors were chosen because there is already transit service there. We are trying to support and sustain it. We are not, we are deliberately not asking AATA to extend their service. We are um trying to build upon where their routes already are. Now, we hope that this will be such a success, and there will be so many more riders along this route that they'll be able to run more buses more frequently. Um, which would be a great benefit to all. Uh, but I get it, you're, you don't want to move to somewhere that doesn't already have transit service and hope for the best. There already is transit service there, and it jumps into a little bit, the next question, as you know, Brett, is. Um. Um. What are the process and considerations in selecting this area for TC one? Why not, for example, extend it farther west? And part of the answer is, we are. We are have deliberately chosen um where there is AATA service right now. And the service is not the same farther west. We have um stopped at South Main Street. Um. Because that is one, that is one of the routes that is already there.
Thank you. Uh, should we expect changes to the streetscape to support active transportation modes as well as transit, such as separated bike lanes, bus islands, et cetera? Um, I agree, I think that would complement the zoning. Uh, again, those are public infrastructure decisions that have to be made. It's like transit services somewhat independent of the decisions we have to made about make about the regulatory framework for private property. But I would say that recently, the city um, city uh council and city staff have a track record of 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 being innovative. And trying to advance those concepts in the city, so. The short answer is, I think, yes, it should happen, and I would anticipate it would as the character of these areas such as this evolves. Um, will staff share a list of the property owner names, not their LLC name, that will receive the huge windfall and increase the value of their properties with this rezoning? Are these owners also listed as contributors on Mayor Taylor and his allies' campaign finance reports? Um. I don't know, we shared the list of the property owners, LLCs are um perfectly legal property owners to own property in the city. I know that there are public records where one can go to the state and learn more information about LLCs. We are not doing that as part of our rezoning. Um, we are looking for the appropriateness of whether or not this zoning district makes sense in this geography. Um, but we've been fully transparent with those properties that list and have the same resources available to us to answer those questions as anybody else would. Um, and uh, we do not do any investigation of uh contributors on campaign finance reports. But as noted at the beginning of this meeting, both planning commissioners and city councils are responsible for following specific ethic guy, ethics guidelines and responsibilities and carrying out their roles. Uh, what is the height of the tallest existing building in that area now? Uh, Alexis, do you know?
Um, it is um either the seven-seven-seven Eisenhower Building or Wolverine Tower, and both are in the. Say one hundred and twenty to one hundred and fifty foot range, ten, twelve story range.
If a property is sold, can the new buyer use it as is, or will they be required to complete a percentage of conforming modifications prior to receiving a C of O? Assuming they no need to make a structural site modification to successfully operate the business. But the short answer is uh zoning status doesn't, isn't specific to a property owner. So if their property is conforming or nonconforming and the ownership changes, that status doesn't change in the eyes of the city. When uses or development happens, that's when some of those question, when the uses change. Or when development activity occurs or improvements happen, that's when the the evaluation of it compared to current standards is going to apply. Is there any plan for changes or redesign to the center lane on South State Street, south of Eisenhower Parkway? Um.
Well, that is um, that is controlled by MDOT, uh, the State Department of Transportation. Um, that is a, so. The City of Ann Arbor Transportation Engineers um and cannot um automatically answer that question. It is not under our control. I can, I think I confidently say that every city staff in this um would like it to be uh redesigned. And I know that our traffic engineers tried to work very closely with MDOT, and when um. When they decide to redevelop and we do um. Um, their jurisdiction, we work um as best we can with them to get the designs of our choosing. Um, but none of us here at the city can answer that um that question with any certainty because it is not our call.
Is there any thought for some public open space in this area? I think a small pocket park or plaza would be nice, as long as it is well activated by surrounding uses.
Um, it is not in the design standards for the TC one zoning district. Um. Now, when working with property owners and reviewing site plans, um, if the design seems to call for them, we can work with a individual property owner. Um, the City Parks Department um is also uh free to step in if they feel that they see a need. Um, they usually try to follow. The residential and not lead. Um, but they can um. Uh, and they and they like to work with what they've got. If there's parkland that is donated or dedicated to them, they can then program it in transit. So um, I feel ultimately it's a. We have not planned for it because a combination of um. This is private property, we're not sure where the need will be across all two hundred and twenty-some acres. As well as um, there's not, there's not yet the need for it.
Uh, comment, recognizing how um we have an excellent bus system and this densifying uh. Uh. Uh, the corridors make sense from a climate change um and should be considered elsewhere. Um. A student, I'm a student at the University in the Southeast Michigan native, happy that this TC one has started to be added. Parking maximums are great news. Um, and ultimately, this approach would provide future options, uh, tall buildings. Um, that close to the city center allow people to live a car-free life, um, potentially save money if you don't need a car. I cannot wait for this TC one zoning. Um, I paraphrase that a lot, but thank you for your comments, the information will be in the report. Um, are these sixty-nine properties just a pilot program, or how soon are you preparing to extrapolate and expand this program to other streets? Um, I'll, I'll start this in a while, and um, maybe the. Um. Well, I guess I'll answer this. Uh. When the TC one zoning district was um first being considered, there was a lot of discussion about whether or not it might be appropriate to craft a zoning district specific to this area. Um, and uh, consider implementation there, and and then think about modification to that district as it might apply to different areas in the city. Uh, instead, it was approached from a more um generalized perspective and form-based perspective, I would say. That's where a lot of the standards from distance from uh residential zoning comes into play, so it might have more utility and application in other areas of the city. This is envisioned to be the first, but it then I think it is envisioned to then proceed to consideration along other transit corridors. Um, other transit corridors that could be considered in the future are places like Washtenaw Avenue, Plymouth Road, Stadium. Um. Other corridors, but um, so not quite a pilot. The district was drafted, really, I think, with the intent intent of being applied in other corridors. But this is the first one that the city has considered, of course, and a city-initiated rezoning to this. To this zoning district, excuse me. Um. This seems to align with the city's A two zero carbon neutrality plan of increased density and reduced vehicle miles. Uh, thank you for your comment, is this zoning is passed, will new developments be viewed as by right? Um, generally, in all of our zoning districts, there are developments that are by right. Um, we do have some don't districts that um have trade-offs. Uh, but in all of our zoning districts, we prescribe certain permitted uses. That if they are meet all of the development regulations of our district um and our code, then they are to be approved. And so, um, yes, the developments in this district could be, would be by right. Unless there was some aspect to them that didn't meet that requirements that required some other consideration or some sort of discretionary um consideration. Uh, happy to see this going forward. Uh, would like to see it unpacked as well. Uh, thank you for your comment, support for the proposed zoning. If we are increasing residential density, is there a parallel plan in this area to bring park-like spaces for these folks? I think that that was addressed before in the public and open space. Uh, we do uh again seek to um either incorporate amenities on private development or contributions to our system so that we can keep up with that ratio. Um, but um, as it becomes more successful and it becomes really more of a twenty-four hour kind of place. Um, there might be opportunities for our needs for us to think about sort of public infrastructure in that regard. I'm glad this change is moving forward. Uh, thank you for your comments. Um, a comment that this is a giveaway to developers without any affordable housing or sustainability requirements or nor incentives. What about the city's sustainability goals? Are those requires requirements only for homeowners and not for developers? Um. Well, this is a zoning district that's quite different from a lot of our single-family residential, of course. Um, climate change goals has, I think, um implications to all of our land uses across the city. Um, so I don't think that this is saying that one is more important than the other. Uh, can staff generate a map of city parkland within one mile of the proposed district? Yes, we can do that. Um. Uh, encouraging mixed uses and improvements, strip malls of the last century deserve to be a material for the history books. Um, you're welcome, we're glad to provide this opportunity to hear from you. Um. Uh, thank you, uh, some direction to me, uh, several of your answers are, I don't know, or thanks for your comment or answered live are flipped and incomplete. Are you able to com- provide complete written answers to all the questions on zoning uh? The project website. Uh, my apologies, I by no means am I intending to be flip. Um, I am just uh doing my best to address the questions either in typing them or ones that we do. Cover in the the video presentation of this, as a reminder, this video is going to be provided. Um, if you have additional questions, please continue to provide them, you can provide them either to Alexis or to planning@h2gov.org. And we will, of course, endeavor to get uh information out.
Brett, I would just add, I'm not sure what um folks can see at home if they're clicking on the um. The the chat, but, for example, one comment that's up right now, or one comment slash question is, thank you for all your hard work around this. I think this is going to be really excellent for the City of Ann Arbor. That's the kind of question that Brett is saying, thank you for your comment. Um. He, you are, if you can't see, then for those just listening, uh, when he says thank you for your comment, it's because there was a comment and not a question.
And and just to be clear, um, I'm doing my best to sort of summarize some of these paraphrase at times. If for some reason I mischaracterize something, my apologies. As a reminder, a full detailed report of all the questions and response that have been typed. Will be generated and posted along with the link to watch this video at your leisure. So um, you will have the benefit of all the questions as well as any responses um in that regard. Um, are Packard and State north of Stadium? Packard and State North Stadium, quarters with current frequent bus service eligible for this TC one treatment? Can the treatment expand to cover, say, all of the R four C housing sandwiched by State, Hill, and Packard?
I can answer this, um, if you like, um. No, they are not eligible, those uh parts of Packard and State north of Stadium. Uh, yes, they do have frequent bus service, but those are uh residential corridors. Um, they have no commercial. The TC one district was uh is trying to introduce the element of residential into commercial and office-dominated areas. But not the opposite, we are, that may be another project, but for, but the TC one district is to take the transit corridors that um. Have a have a single use, but which is mostly commercial or and or office, and introduce more residential, make them more twenty-four seven. Um, you know, get them more mixed use and not so single-use dominated. Packard north of Stadium, State north of Stadium. Um. It is entirely residential, um, and it. It would need its own, its own treatment, um, or own. Future project.
Look, thank you. A comment about support, supporting the proposed zoning. Excited to see movement on the zoning option. All right, we do have a few participants who have called in who may not have the benefit of the visuals or being able to easily add questions into the Q and A. So I'd like to provide an opportunity here for anyone who has called into the meeting. If you would like to pose a question or a comment, please raise your hand using star nine on your keypad. And then I will select you, announce you by the last three digits of your phone number and provide you up to three minutes to provide comments or comments on or questions on the proposed discussion that you've heard this evening. So be star nine. If you'd like to address any comments or questions. All right, not seeing any. I'm going to jump back to the Q and A. Could you speak a little to the history of this proposal? How long ago was it that the city began working on transit support zoning proposals? When was the South State Street Plan authored? Alexis, you want to provide a little bit of history on the zoning? The South State Street Plan was authored in 2009, I believe.
I will take your word on it for that exact year. I feel like you can go back in our master plans, comprehensive plans, transportation plans, you can go back in our plans and you'll see a recurring theme. You won't see TC one, but you will see a recurring theme about more density along transit corridors, more density along commercial corridors, more mixed uses, easier to for car free living, more livability, more housing in general, more housing choices. More and more affordable housing. And so It, it's been generations have been working toward this. And then the, but the real trigger was I, I want to maybe four to five years ago, there was a small group of council members who initiated and started with a resolution directing staff and planning commission. Let's, let's build it. Let's implement our master plan recommendations and let's try to develop and upzone our transit corridors. And we, we worked in starts and fits and we took some detoured directions, but as a whole, the staff working heavily with the ordinance revisions committee and the planning commission developed the TC one district to add to the zoning ordinance that had the mix of uses that we want to see on our transit corridors and that ensures enough density to support and sustain that those transit corridors. And that all was presented in public hearings and eventually adopted this summer TC one. And then as part of its adoption, council asked staff to start implementing and start rezoning as soon as possible. And we're taking it in chunks. The first chunk is the state and Eisenhower corridor. If anyone has followed along, they might recall there was a big debate. Do you start with the Washtenaw area? Do you start with state and Eisenhower pros and cons to each? And we are starting with state and Eisenhower and we will add councils and planning commissions direction, continue to move forward.
Thank you, Alexis. And I need to correct myself to the critique of my responses before. Is the, the, the city's land use plan was adopted in 2009. The South State Corridor Plan was adopted in 2013. So the South State Corridor Comprehensive Plan was adopted in 2013 of it and that is available on the city's website. Is there any plan to change the footprint of the Ann Arbor Airport? No, no, not to my knowledge. I would like to see something around adding commercial uses in residential districts. I think it's not part of the TC one, but a good idea. Thank you for your comment. Is there a reason for the 15 foot minimum first floor height? A 15 foot ceiling height was significant window area may be challenging to heat and cool in the winter and summer. It may not be needed for the proposed use. Would it make more sense to allow flexibility in this design standard to let users average design options to reduce environmental impact and allocate space to its highest use? Great question. This is a standard that we also incorporated in our downtown and its intention is to provide long term viability for reuse and evolution of spaces. It is common for, well, it's not common. It is possible for commercial spaces that are constructed at a higher ceiling height to have adaptability to change from maybe retail to office to hospitality. You name it. It is, it is probably impossible. The architects on the planning commission and the audience can nod or not to go the opposite direction. When you have relatively low ceiling heights that might be originally programmed for residential use, not viable to convert often into office or retail or hospitality service types uses. So the intention is to provide a form that provides long term flexibility and viability for those ground floor uses so that as the market changes and the needs change and the uses change, there's a lot of opportunities to go in a lot of different directions. If my parcel is owned office in the master plan, does that mean I can put in retail? Potentially, if you are in this area and it's rezoned to TC one, then yes, retail would be a permitted use. Another great opportunity to reach out to us, talk about your property specifically, and we can go through scenarios with you. If my person was located within the Briarwood Circle, will I be able to add an entrance off of Eisenhower? Traffic review is done as part of any site plan, but I would say as part of this TC one, we're trying to reduce the number of curb cuts rather than increase. So I think I can't answer that definitively, just sort of hypothetically, but I think we would start with encouraging alternatives, not adding additional curb cuts so that we can provide more real estate and sort of priority to transit and non motorized uses rather than vehicular. All right. We're doing good time wise. If are there any other questions, please, ones that you felt that were not covered were missed, please feel free to ask them. But in the meantime, maybe this might be an opportunity for the planning commission to follow up with any questions that you may have or additional information that you would like for us to put together as well.
Mr. Leonard, do you want to call in commissioners or should I?
I'll leave it to you, chairmen.
All right, Commissioner Dish.
Thank you. I don't want to take a long time with this, but I did want to address the concern that was raised about the the decision not to offer incentives for sustainability and affordability. And I may not get all of this right, but the way I think about it is that, yeah, it is really true that we would like to avoid building infrastructure that commits us to fossil fuels for the next 50 years. That is something that we have thought about when we think about as we look at other developments. And we're especially sad when we see single family scattered site home developments that are going to be fossil fuel dependent for the next 50 years. But there are two aspects of this project that are part of the sustainability plan, regardless whether they are fossil fuel dependent or not. And that is the fact we are creating more housing and we are creating housing that we intend to be supported by transit and where we're going to limit folks access to cars. And so that in itself is in an advance for sustainability. Yes, we would love for the city to have, you know, to do a massive development of, of affordable housing and we are doing as much as we can on city sites, but one of the one of the opportunities that we have here is develop out of the city core. And that means that the rents that people that developers could command are lower than they are in the city center. So there's going to be an aspect of affordability also built into the structure of this project. It won't be 30% AMI affordable, but it will be more affordable than much of the multifamily larger scale housing that we're seeing happening in the city. So and were we to try to require or you know, configure these districts so that for additional height developers would have to provide an affordable component in their development. We're really worried that we're going to price this development out of the market. In some ways, we would be getting something like it already if people felt that it was worth their while and we aren't getting it. So I think the impotence, the impetus behind this planning is, as Planner DeLeo said, it's been to try to make this as attractive to developers as possible. It, I think that the, the notion that we're kind of giving away the farm here doesn't take the realities of the market into consideration. And as usual, I am happy to have my remarks corrected and the, and more nuance added. But I wanted to address that because I think it is a real tension.
Other planning commissioners have questions for staff work comments. Commissioner Sylve.
I have two, just small comments that I picked up on. One for Park and Ride, would that be his own public land? Or would that fall in private development?
The U of M Park and Ride would definitely be zone PL. I have a side project. I have a to do list. We have not kept pace with the university's land acquisition. So there's the zoning map doesn't reflect all of their current holdings. I'm not as well versed. I'm going to look it up about if there's a another parking ride there. I don't think so, but I before I dismiss it, I want to double check.
Okay, that was just one that like, I don't want parking as primary use. But I understand the whole park and ride connectivity thing. So yeah, looking into it further and figuring out if it's, it's probably not in the zoning. So it's probably in public land or some other facet to make that possible. The other comment, I just want a little clarification on is existing buildings maintain previous zoning designation. Kind of like for their nonconformingness, they need to maintain that, correct?
Now, the code doesn't say they maintain their non, their previous zoning designation at or no, but it specifically calls out and says that they're not nonconforming. So the the way to administer it is if someone was to ask me for a zoning compliance letter, I would have to do more research than normal and to say, well, it's an existing building. It existed prior to being rezoned TC one. Is it, if it conformed before, it will continue to conform as long as nothing else changes. Our, our code often, and we do in this case, sort of goes out of our way to make sure we're not creating nonconformities when we rezone. But the new standards apply to new development because that's the way we evolve and that's the way that we move toward status quo towards implementing the master plan, how we see are the changes, but it, that's the way we have to administer the way this is code is worded. It just requires more research and more nuance when you're, and just when you're trying to answer this question, is my billing conforming or nonconforming?
Okay. And that, that helps just like, that was kind of like a broad flowing statement that I figured was worth praising to have that conversation. And I guess the follow up is like, is there a way for any property owner to trace back previous zoning easily? Or is it something that would require city staff to do deeper research and homework?
Um, easily. Maybe not. Away, yes. I can look into some of our IT and data to see if maybe it can be to see if that chronology and history could be more easily made available. Otherwise, it does require a record search.
Okay. Is that just on E track it for?
Well, that's where, um, right, no, right now you check it only provides current zoning. And that would be my, my question. Could you check it provide previous zoning? I don't know.
And that's like, as we get into things like, you know, the, the larger rezoning and things, I think it'd be helpful to have that more easily accessible. So figuring out how the system could support it would be good.
That was it for now. Thank you.
I see a couple more questions that have come from the audience and I want to address those. But before we lose too many people, I first want to make sure to thank all of the folks who have come out and given comments tonight and participated in this meeting. I'm, I'm really excited that we had so, so many folks and so many questions. At least by the kind of, you know, Q and A count here, it looks like we're getting, we're getting close to 70 questions. So I also want to thank staff for managing this and, and answering so many of those questions. To that end, to a point of clarification. In the calendar that was set out, it was kind of what, what folks in the audience might expect to see this again. It looks like it may be on a planning commission, the, the target date for kind of a planning commission agenda would be the 20th of January. That's a Thursday. So I just want to make sure it's because of the Martin Luther King holiday. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So do you want to acknowledge that, that that wasn't a typo? It is a Thursday. It is we, for our, for folks who regularly follow us, holidays shift us around occasionally. So.
And if, if I could just jump into that, that is sort of a projected schedule. I would just remind participants that the best way to keep apprised of all planning mission agendas is to subscribe to our planning updates of delivery service. Share all agendas with, with that email list. So that's a great way to, if, if any changes happen, you're going to be notified of that, but that is our anticipated schedule.
Very good. Could we answer the couple of questions that have come in?
Alexis, could you summarize again the sort of the omission of Briarwood Mall from the proposed area? What's the rationale for that?
Briarwood Mall is not a, it is near, but it is not on a transit corridor. The buses currently go in, they serve it, but it's the end. It's the last of the line. It's not the corridor. Briarwood also is just a much different animal than the, the transit corridors. It's really only a couple of lots and a couple of property owners. The TC one district standards won't work well for the, the size and the scope, the, you know, it, it's, it needs to be broken down more. And the TC one was crafted for multiple smaller lots in comparison. I know there are big lots out there, but compared to the lots at Briarwood and then also the placement of Briarwood. I think that a lot of people can envision that Briarwood might become its own neighborhood, maybe a grid of streets or something along those lines. It, it's not really a corridor. And so for those reasons, and, and because it's not actually on the transit corridor, it doesn't have the service that state or Eisenhower does. It's not, it does, it's not going to get our transit corridor treatment. It's going to get its own treatment. I can't tell you what it is though, because we haven't started that process.
And for history, that it's, it's happened in a similar way for some of the similar factors. The sort of consistency of ownership. It's been planned in a, in a very unique manner. And I think given its size, however it evolves, it's going to be appropriate for that focused discussion. If more retail and entertainment venues are being created and encouraged for those living in the area to enjoy, how individuals that do not live in the area be able to utilize these new potential businesses with very little parking? Won't that limit the business's success? Part of it is trying to replicate successful places that emphasize those uses over parking. Part of the draw often for those types of land uses is places that people can go and recreate and grab a meal and, and take in a show and go to multiple land uses. It's about finding the balance of how do we encourage those flexibility of uses without some of the barriers of huge swaths of parking in between them that make them less desirable for people to to attend and stay in those places. So it's a good question when you think about a use that's really sort of isolated and unto itself. But when you talk about trying to cultivate a mix of use where you can start seeking multiple destinations on a single trip and accessing those through different means. It really is about emphasizing the actual buildings and use over the parking lots that oftentimes are in between them. Anything you want to add to that, Alexis?
No, I could, you know, it's on a bus route, you could take a bus to get there. There might even be more bus service in the future. This might spark better non-motorized facilities. There's some now. This might spark even more. And then I, we all can probably rattle off a bunch of spots in town that are still very popular, that don't have a lot of parking. Or even whether it be individual businesses or little commercial areas. And parking is not prohibited here. I would imagine, I mean, I, it's bear with me for a stretch, but you know, like, if you think of Disney World, Disney World is, they bring you in, you store your car. And there's that whole shopping area at Disney. Well, parking is not prohibited here. With enough success, maybe it's justified to have a parking structure here for those, because there's going to always be some people that are car dependent or car preference, and that's okay. But what we're trying to do is expand it and put everyone on equal footing, the people who really like to drive their cars, but then also the people who don't. And put everyone on equal footing. And so I think how to get here in the future, there's going to be all of the existing ways that you can think of now and maybe more.
My, my answer was convoluted. Hopefully yours was better, Alexis. How late do the buses run in that area? Is it realistic to think that someone might be able to get there and get back home? Buses do run, of course, in both directions on those corridors. I don't know how late the bus is running there, others in that area, there are several routes applicable. Alexis, if you have that information, we can address it. If not, we can provide a map with those routes and the span of service and the frequency in this area. We've gotten that information and it might have evolved as the services sort of creeping back to normalcy post.
Yeah, I would say like I, from my own bus riding, I feel like around 11 or midnight is often the last route. Now, it's because there's no demand later. The, there is a chicken, there's a chicken and egg situation, there's a cart ahead of the horse. If this is wildly successful and we had a lot more residential plus a lot more entertainment and commercial, I, I think the transit service, the answer today would not, will not be the same as it is in the future.
I think some appreciation for your Disney World comparison.
That was quite a stretch. It's getting late and I'm getting moving.
Two references, we will, we will put that information up, but a reference that both you can the ride, of course, has their route details online. Somebody identifies that the 62 stops at midnight or some of that data, thank you for contributing. Would parking structures be allowed in the TC one district?
Parking structures are not a principal use. You can't tear down a building and put up a parking lot. I'm sorry, parking structure. However, they are an accessory structure. If you have a building and if, and our regulations are not our regulations are for the footprint of the parking, so you can structure your parking. Because again, parking is not prohibited in the first place. And then how you want to design it, parking structure is permitted.
Another reference that the ride provides night ride services. So that is another opportunity, even when the span of service might be a little too early. A comment that someone visited an individual from Ward one once and got frustrated because they had to wait 10 minutes. And it took a while for several stops along the way. He preferred to use his own car. You know, you know, part of
He preferred to, he's, he's getting his spin scooter home.
Yeah.
Amazon like that's if still around, that would be a choice.
Yeah, and part of, part of the typology of development that we're seeking to support, that's, that is a goal of it, is what options are there? Unfortunately, with some of these automotive oriented corridors, you really have one option to successfully access them. And this is about looking for opportunities to really add a lot of viable options for people to make the choices that they want to make. Yes, thank you for reiterating. The ride is undergoing a long-range plan right now. They're taking your comments right now. Check it out, provide your feedback. All right, we're all up to date. Any other commissioners have questions or comments? Another question posted. I think this goes to the question of community benefits. I'm presuming affordability or sustainability, we would have achieved more community benefits if this massive increase in building size was offered to developers as an incentive premium to build affordable housing or net zero building or increased stormwater management or more parks and open space. Isn't giving the massive buy rate increase in building size for no community benefits just tragic giveaway to already wealthy developers? I think that we've talked about some of the benefits that this does have to sustainability. It does have impacts to providing more housing. It does have impacts to providing community benefits and, and supporting alternative transportation models. Thank you for the, the comments on it.
A comment about incentives and premiums. I think one of the things to remember about when you offer incentives and premiums, it means that you are comfortable, you are also comfortable and you are accepting of if they do not take advantage and if they don't do those incentives or premiums. And so you, you are comfortable then with the base zoning, if you will. And I think in this case, we, the, when crafting the TC one district, the the community said, we, we don't want any, we don't want to offer them as, as premiums because we want them to be, we want them to be by right, we want them to be the base. That the, the, the developments need to have a parking maximum, not minimum, that the, it needs to be easy to do infield development because we don't want someone to not take advantage of this. And I think this would apply to, this also applies in general.
A comment that reducing reliance on single occupancy motor vehicles is itself a community benefit. Thank you for your comment.
I would like to suggest that, given that we have a lot of people still on the line and kind of wrapped up comments that as we typically have at the end of our work session, an opportunity for public comment about any item that wasn't kind of under discussion tonight. Again, to keep things organized, if there's, if you have continued comment about TC one, the rezoning or the proposed changes to height, go ahead and put them in Q and A. If you've got comments on anything else, if you want to either use the raised hand function, or you can also enter them into the Q and A. Actually, Q and, like, it would, I think it would be better just to do raised hand function and then you could have up to three minutes to to provide that public comment to the planning commission. And if you've joined us through the phone and want to provide a public comment about something beyond TC one, you can press star nine on your phone.
We have one hand raised. Sarah, are you running that?
Shea, you can go ahead. You have up to three minutes to address the planning commission.
Hello, my name is Abdul. I'm a student at the University of Michigan. I'm undergraduate student and I wanted to call number one, thank you all for your hard work. I know it's a lot of administrative like difficulties to get all the stuff done. Staff in the planning commission are working really hard and behind the scenes to get changes done to the city that we all appreciate. Also wanted to add that I'm really, really happy that the city is creating ways for people to live car light. And I wanted to add that not just transit corridors can be used for car light development, but also creating gentle density in Ann Arbor's neighborhoods can be a great way to allow people to live car light, especially in those neighborhoods near the university and near downtown that are mostly, that mostly serve people who work at the university or work in downtown or attend the university and zoning those places to allow for more housing options and, you know, more ways for people to be able to live and, and more competition for landlords in the market can be really great and would complement the DC one zoning along a street like Washington or a street like Packard possibly or any street with commercial, you know, beyond the, beyond just the corridor interfacing with commercial, but also in like the residential areas as well. So I'd really love to see something like that, you know, permitting more European style housing. Like where, where you have neighborhoods that are not, not as commercial, but not as residential, but you know, sort of a a flowing community, doesn't, doesn't resemble a downtown area, but it also doesn't resemble a stereotypical, you know, 1920s, single-family home neighborhood.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to provide public comment at the work session? You can raise your hand using the raised hand feature on Zoom. Or if you've dialed in, you can press star nine. All right, seeing no one. I think then, is there anything else on the, I'm going to find my agenda. I think we are set. Again, thank you so much for all who have attended and participated this evening and we hope to see you again when we discuss this, when it's before us during a public hearing. I guess we don't vote, so we're adjourned. Have a good night, folks.
Thank you all.